Okay, everybody, let's get started.
This is down. Is it not down or up? I'm going to just.
So, welcome to the first budget year 2015 City of Issaquah budget meeting. We're starting this meeting, council members Goodman, March, Scherer, and Milligan are here. Council members Polly and Barber are on their way. They are still in, they're in executive session at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting. So I've been contacted, I've been made aware of that. I do expect them to attend. And so, I do believe we have an, we have an agenda. That's wonderful. And really, we've scheduled a good chunk of time tonight, and I don't think, well, we're just going to get right into it, but really, it's all about the general fund. We're going to start with a big picture overview. I'm getting some nods here. And so, who's going to start, Bob?
Our finance director.
Okay, so, so let me just say before we get started, you know, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're starting off great, right? We've got a process. I know you guys have been working on this for a while, and, and really now, you know, it becomes a real collaborative effort. I know that this council is very familiar with our, what we've done in the last few years, they're very familiar with our policies, financial policies, and you'll probably hear me mention our financial policies more than once. I asked for, for giving us ahead of time, but really, you know, I believe it's a key part of this being a, a real successful effort and doing it in an efficient way, that we keep our, you know, those are our guiding documents, and I know that between, you know, what, what the work plan priorities were for the, you know, for staff going into this, including our own goals, and including those financial policies, those are the key guidelines that the administration had in putting together, you know, this prepared budget. So, you know, that's the basis that we all share, and I think I'll be looking in listening and also talking in my own self, trying to keep that in mind, and, and, and just, and as a way and as a tool to kind of keep us on track and keep us focused on the right kinds of issues, and making sure that we're policy-based. So I just wanted to say that, and, you know, thanks, it's a, it's a, I've scanned through the document. It looks really good. It really does, and I can't wait till our futures online systems where these are not just static pie charts on, you know, but we can interact with the data and look at different graphs and charts. I know that's in the future, but, you know, the presentation is, has really got a good start. I'm looking forward to, you know, for it through tonight and everything that we have already scheduled, I think, total of four and a fifth if needed budget meeting.
Three and a fourth.
Yeah, we've got three that are definitely, we're going to be getting down and dirty, and a fourth if needed, and, or, we'll probably need the fourth. It's just, it's a complex, and I know this council likes to get things right. So, anyway, so, that's it. Just wanted to say those few words. Thanks for being here. Let's, Diane, over to you.
Okay. Well, just kind of start off, we're starting really big picture. I think one of the things, you know, having been in this business a while, it's really interesting because each year it becomes more and more difficult to develop a budget because our resources are either declining or becoming more and more restrictive. And so, when we're building our budgets, we need to look at different funding and sources coming together in order to accomplish perhaps one particular project. Additionally, as you'll see in our presentation, we're proposing some new revenue options to help fund some increases that were outside of the city's control, but also as a way of continuing to maintain our level of service. About this time every year, you begin to see newspaper articles about other cities nationwide and even in the Northwest, and what I have been seeing is that some of the, what you'll see tonight, you'll, what I want to share with you is some of the challenges that we have, both in this budget and long-term, and we're not unique. I was sharing with Bob, I was looking at one newspaper article where they were adding some jobs, and I'm like, wow, how are they adding jobs? That was the headline. But when you got into the story of the article, they were creating a new fee in which they were doing a hydrant tax per residential house, and that was how it was paying for all of these new additions. So, you know, whether you're up in Snohomish County, or Northern King County, or in Pierce County, and you're seeing a lot of the cities when they're beginning to present their budget, both offering up, recommending revenue increases or new fees, as well as they've also done some reductions, which we'll be talking about later on tonight. So, one of the things is you sort of just do a temperature test to see how do we compare to other communities, and the articles that I'm beginning to see in the papers is much similar as to what I was seeing here. So, starting out with the first slide is, you know, the City of Issaquah, we're a business, and we're a big business. Once we get going. So, the City of Issaquah is a corporation, and our annual operating budget is a little over 118 million. So, you know, when you think of the corporate world, we're a very large business, we provide lots of service, we have a lot of diversity in the services that we provide. This is up substantially from last year, it's up about $10 million. It's primarily up as a result of a number of capital projects, both in our utility operations as well as our street operations. So, that is the, the most significant increase. When you look at our overall 118 million, you can see that the majority is spent in two major areas. The first area is our general fund, which accounts for around 33%, and the remaining portion is our utility, we have about 24% in our utility capital projects and utility operations, and then we have about 20% in our streets. So as you can see, the three primary operations we do is our utilities, our streets, and then our general fund. Looking at it a different way, and this is the first time we've done something like this, is we try to look at how we functionally spend our money. And when you look at this slide, you can see that of the entire 118 million, 14% is related to public safety, 21% is related to transportation, utilities at 22, and then parks and recreation would be our largest, the next largest at 13%. So you can, it's a different way of looking at from a fund structure versus an operational. So like transportation, when you look at that, we actually have money related, street operations, some money in our capital improvement fund, some money in our 355 fund, we have some money in our ITS. So what we try to do is to say, okay, this is a different picture for you to understand how we spend our money. And as you can see, you know, and then our utilities includes both our capital operations and our operating, so that includes both. So it's just a different way of seeing how we spend money. So when we developed our budget strategy, these were some of the philosophies or the approach that we were taking. We wanted to continue to maintain our sound financial management practices, and that goes to Councilmember Winterstein's comments about our financial policies and ensuring that we were adhering to those policies that the council adopted in 2013. We also wanted to look and review and major, review and address our major cost drivers. Several years ago, in particular, it was our health care. It was going up anywhere between 6% to 8%. You know, we're pleased to announce this year that our, we have a 0% increase in our health care. So that was a major primary cost driver, that by going self-insured, we were able to get a little more control on those costs. We want to develop a long-term vision and to direct the city's activities and resources to what the community wants, and in that light, we are in the process of developing a community survey that we will be sending out to the community to get their input on a variety of topics, and then we'll be coming back to you once the survey is complete to give you the results, to give you a idea of how the community was responding. We looked at different revenue options, looking at which of those seem to be the most palatable or those that would be, work the best. And then, we want to, we wanted to maintain services that create a vital and livable community. The, you'll see that we were able to continue to fund our services at their current level, and we did not have to do any major reduction as far as level of service in the programs that we provide to the community. And then, we want to continue to implement best practices. We've shared with the council over time that we've been training our organization in, in the philosophy of a high-performance organization, as well as lean processes that deals with efficiencies and finding ways to improve our processes, deliver services in a more efficient manner. And then we want to develop those metrics as we develop those practices to see, compare them against what our measures are to ensure that we're achieving those goals, or if not, what things can we do to make a correction to that, so we can stay on course. The budget summary for 2015, it's balanced, you know, with revenues and expenditures. I think the most important thing is we had a lot of conversation last year about some of our operating funds. So our operating funds are not reliant upon any previous years' beginning cash balance. There is some small exceptions, there was a project, the Historical Society had funded a feasibility study this year, they were not able to complete it, so we took both the dollar and the programs and moved them forward to 2015 to accomplish that. You'll see we're using a lot of our cash balance to complete a lot of capital projects. This is probably one of the largest capital projects years I have seen, looking back in the history of City of Issaquah. We have a very aggressive program that we want to accomplish next year. And then, in many cases, we'll be having some conversation. We have included some carryover of projects when we have known what those projects are. Some, there's two philosophies, if it's known and we have enough information, we'll go ahead and rebudget it. Otherwise, sometimes when we get into March of, April of 2015, we'll come forward to the council with an amendment. So where it was known or we thought we had reliable information, we went ahead and budgeted those projects that were carryovers. The revenue adjustments and enhancements are in three funds, the general fund, the sustainability fund, and the sewer, and we'll be talking about those throughout the three days that we're doing the workshops. And it includes some strategic reductions and enhancements. We did an aquatics reorganization, which is a division of the Parks and Rec program, and then we also did a small reorg in the parks facility, and then we increased human services funding over previous years.
Yeah, you can.
So I just, on the last slide.
Yeah.
So the main thing I wanted to say is, part of this was the task that the council gave to the mayor last year, and, and the mayor says at times he gave it to himself, since he was council president last year. But it was very important to him to make sure that the, the budget was balanced this year, both on revenues and expenditures. And as we go through some of the detail, you'll see that there's a combination of both some revenue enhancements and, and cuts, and I think, you know, one of the things that I wanted to communicate, and you heard that from him Monday night, that he was, he was very serious about accomplishing that this year, and he took a, he's taken a pretty substantial investment on both sides to try and accomplish this in the upcoming year. So as we go through the overall budget, I think you'll see that there's a, there's a balance that we were trying to strike of both revenues and expenditures reductions that ended up in the budget this year.
We always fact-checking this.
Yeah, we do.
So, some of the highlights in the proposed budget is in the general fund, we have included the 1% allowance in increases in property tax. This amounts to 75,000. As the mayor indicated in his presentation, it's around $4.19 increase annually for a house that is assessed at around 420,000. It also includes an increase in the BNO tax. We'll be spending considerable time on, last year, as part of the council president's message, the administration was asked to perform an in-depth analysis and study of our business and occupation tax structure, and then come back with some recommendations. An ad hoc committee was formed, and Bob will be sharing with you the results of that, the work that the committee did, as well as some work done at the administrative level. Currently, we have a surcharge, it's an e-GOV surcharge, and it is a pass-through to e-GOV Alliance. We're proposing establishing a technology fee, and there'll be some conversation about that also tonight in explaining it. It was part of your agenda packet this last Monday night, and I think it got referred to committee, no, it got referred to here.
Yes.
Got referred to here, and then there's a recommendation to establish a non-city resident park and recreation fee to help cover some of the costs of the programs that we currently provide funding from either property tax or sales tax. As I indicated earlier, in sustainability, also in your packet for Monday night, there is a recommendation to increase the contract fee with our solid waste services, so that we can continue to provide funding for our Office of Sustainability and the valuable programs that they provide. We'll be talking about that program next Tuesday night. In the stormwater fund, the operation part, it's pretty much status quo, there really isn't any significant changes from this current year. The last rate increase was in 2008 for the stormwater. We continue to fund our capital projects with existing rate revenue, and the fund currently has no debt outstanding, which is very nice. For the sewer utility, the last rate increase for the city portion, because the sewer bill is broken out to a city portion, which is the smaller portion of the overall revenue, and then the larger portion is a pass-through fee for metro, for the collection and transmission of the sewer. Metro rate is recurrent, metro is having a rate increase of 4.5% for single-family residential sewer rates, and a 3.9% for multifamily, and I believe that was also included in your agenda packet for Monday night. And then, again, the capital projects are funded with, through the rate revenue structure versus the existence of any outstanding debt. For the water utility, the last rate increase was in 2011. Capital projects there are also funded with rate revenue, and we have one outstanding bond currently in that fund, and it, it was issued in 2001, and it should be paid off in 2021. It's around $600,000 a year. Some additional changes is in staffing. We have a court security officer, we are recommending that that position convert from a part-time, non-regular position to a regular part-time position with benefits. The municipal court, in working with them, has had a difficult time recruiting for this position, and in comments with the people that we've been interviewing, they've said that it comes with some benefits, and they have a greater probability of finding a suitable candidate for that position. This particular change does not require any additional increase, they had sufficient resources within their operating budget to absorb this change, but it's, when we change from a part-time position to a regular budget position, then that's a long-term commitment. So that's the distinguishment of a part-time, non-regular, and a regular, part-time. So, we're also recommending a position, a limited duration period, that would be a senior accountant project position to assist with the implementation of the ERP system. We imagine that should go, take about two years to do the full implementation, and that person would be both doing some backing up in the departments, in the finance department, as well as working on the overall implementation. We, in the administrative assistant position, we have done a 1.5 reduction, we've eliminated, and that is in the general fund. We've eliminated the recreation supervisor position, we reclassify the aquatics coordinator to a recreation coordinator, and the rest of that sentence, I don't, I, it doesn't belong. So, and then we eliminated the city arborist horticulturist position. We also eliminated one recreation leader position, and we added two recreational aid positions. So, overall, in our aquatics division, we have overall one FTE budget reduction there. And then we have a very small increase in environmental science assistant, we're going to increase that position an additional .15 to a .75. That's in the storm utility, we have a lot of requirements in that fund as a result of Council goals, so. So, for the council goals, we were able to fund the requests that came through when we did our retreat. So, under safe, drug-free community, in the general fund, we have appropriations of 70,000, we have 40,000 for police overtime, 10,000 for parks overtime, and 20,000 for outreach. Affordable workforce housing, there was no funding needed at this particular time. We wanted to get a report card first to see what direction the council wanted to go, and once we get that general information, then we can develop a further, refine the plan and figure out where we want to go. The central Issaquah anchor project, in the adoption of the council goal, it was between $0 to $10,000. That $10,000 was potentially for a real estate consultant to provide some assistance, but until we really knew what the scoping of the project was and the real need, we did not fund it at this time, until we knew where we were going with that particular project. Enhance Old Town Vitality, the funding for that is in the capital improvement special project fund. We have appropriations of 20,000 for the Shell gas station project, that would be managed by DIA. And then we have 75,000 for the start of the mobility master plan. The 75,000 is the easy part, once we get through this, developing the study, the further work is around a half a million dollars that we would be looking to fund in 2016. And then, the council recently did a review of our existing 2013 and 14 goals that we're still working on, and the only one that really required any additional appropriation was $35,000 for a marketing package for the City of Issaquah, and that's in the capital improvement fund.
Can I just say one thing about that right here? I, I, that, over the course of the year, we've, we're always using a different label for this, and I think that what we just approved, it was specifically for, to perform a sector analysis.
No.
Ooh, look, I got a no in a yes.
Well, I think currently in 2014, we have funding for a sector analysis.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But this is for 2015 to develop.
So this is not that sector analysis thing that we just wanted?
It is a different project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was presented in a way that there were several steps to get to this final end, and so the agenda bill related to the final materials and information that would feed into the final packet.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And admitting I'm the new kid on the block, so in the 2015 goals, when the enhance Old Town Vitality, when the goal was made, it did not have a specific project, and now it has funding and a project. Is the project already decided, and how did that, how does that part come together?
I'll, I'll take that one. Actually, it was presented to Services and Safety last week. Yeah, yeah, so, and so, it's, it's included in the area under the nonprofit funding, but the justification is this, this particular council goal. So they do have a specific project, and we do have a packet on that. That, it's, yeah, it's in the Services and Safety packet from last week, you can see that.
And that was the council review of?
Yes, that's where we look at that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Astola?
So, I was lucky enough to sit in on Services. I guess I didn't realize when we, when DIA discussed that particular project, that it was, within the context of being a partial satisfaction of this council goal, I thought it was just part of them showing us why they wanted to, to get a, to be on the budget. And I guess I would have asked a lot more questions regarding how this was going to help meet this goal if I had known that, that that was the, the purpose of it. It was not, it was not communicated that, that that's why they were doing it.
So, you know, thanks for admitting that. You were not alone, and I'm recalling that there was a specific line item in our goal, but I did go back and take a look at it, and it's spot-on exactly what we approved in, as far as our 2015 goals, as, as this capital, as a, a capital project for Old Town Vitality.
Oh, no, I, I, I knew that. I remember, I was one of the authors of the, of the, there were several people who submitted goals on.
And not seeing it last Thursday, that the connection was there, that's right.
Right.
So this is riveting so far, please, continue.
Was that question satisfactory answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, move it on, we're just looking. So, let's dig, dig right into it. In the general fund, here is the proposed 2015 revenue sources for the general fund, and then we've also provided you with some historical comparisons. For 2015, property taxes in particular are a little over 7.7 million. It says it's a 5% increase. What it is, is it's a 1% increase over last year, but we received about 150,000 in new construction dollars this year. So a lot of the projects, particularly the ones up in the Highlands, they were finished up in late 2013, and they missed the cutoff for the property tax rolls. So all of those projects came on in 2014, and then we'll collect the taxes for those in 2015. At the county level, what they do is, any project that is not substantially completed by July 31st is not included in their property tax assessment rolls. So we work with them, trying to get, you know, them to review and inspect any of our buildings that we think that are far enough along, so that we can get as much into the tax rolls.
In the, in our budget document, the, the numbers go back to 2013, and it's great that you have 2011 and 2012 up here, so if, if, if this electronic copy could be made available, I'd appreciate it.
Sales tax, as you will see, is pretty flat, and that begins our first challenge when we were developing the budget, in that we normally have seen some substantial increases in our sales tax, and we're just simply not seeing them at this point in time through 2014. So we are only increasing them slightly over what we had anticipated for 2014. Currently for 2014, we're running behind the 8.6 million that we had estimated, not by much, but, but around 100. around $150,000. So I, we backed off that forecast and that revenue estimate. You'll see in other taxes, you'll see a 21%. The majority of that is the proposal for the BNO tax. And then the other larger category is charges for services. You'll see an increase from 5.7 million to 6.4 million.
Other taxes equals BNO?
No, there's a variety. There is a business and occupation tax in that category. There are all of our utility, business and occupation tax. So that's gas, electric, telephone, cable, TV. A very small percentage that we collect on the water utility. It also includes small dollars for gambling tax, leasehold excise tax. So it's, it's a category of primarily business and occupation-type taxes. On charges for other services, a good percentage of this increase is related to the Department of Development Services Department. What they do is they do expedited review. So this is an in and an out. The increase is a little over a million dollars, so it's a million dollars in revenue. And on the other hand, we have an additional million dollars in expenditures because that is money that those projects are being reviewed by third parties. So the developer pays us for the work that the third party does, so we're just budgeting that revenue. Typically, you'll see, we're proposing a budget amendment here for the October 20th meeting, and you'll see where we have included the expedited reviews because that number has become substantial compared to previous years. And other than that, there really isn't any other significant changes in our revenue stream. It's pretty consistent. We're seeing some small increases in our jail service. We've been seeing some increases in the number of beds that are being occupied by people outside of the city. So that revenue's increasing around $100,000. But I think primarily because our main revenue sources are property taxes and sales tax and other taxes. The fact that we have a flat projection for 2015 makes it really difficult when we were trying to balance the budget.
Diane, I have another question. Remind me if there are a change that we can see in that chart in sales tax revenue distribution that impacted how much sales tax we get in these recent years. I can't keep track of all-
So you, are you asking the categories?
No, how sales tax is distributed in the state?
Oh, um, sales tax, the, of the 9.5% that a consumer pays, the city of Issaquah receives 0.85 in sales tax. So the 6.5% goes to the state. Some money goes to the county, some money goes to metro transit. There's actually a breakdown in the budget that shows you the sales tax distribution. So we receive a very small percentage of the overall sales tax collection.
I'll come back to that later. I have another thought. I'll come back later. Thank you.
Okay. Well, part of my opening remarks was sort of reflecting back, you know, in 2007, when we, we began to get the early indication that we were heading into a recession, people started beginning to cut back. And then we got into 2009 and 10, and we, the city did some, some substantial layoffs during that period of time. And then we kind of roll forward to 2015, and even with those reductions that we made and the ones we're proposing, we're still struggling to balance our budget. And I started reflecting back because I've been in this business a long time, and a lot of it really started in the late 1999 and into 2000, and a lot of it was as a result of voter initiatives. That was the beginning when government began to struggle. The first one was the repeal of the standing motor vehicle excise tax. Back in 1999, the city was receiving around $150,000. Probably in today's term, that might be closer to 400,000 or 500,000. So that was a, a revenue source that had been around for years, that we then made, made an adjustment, continued to provide this, our level of service. The next one was when initiative 747 came into place in 2001, and that had the most substantial impact. Traditionally, governments were allowed to increase their property taxes by at least, up to 6%. And then the, an initiative, then the state legislators enacted a limitation of 1%. And I will tell you, historically in the past, the property taxes is what paid for the incremental increase in governmental services in the general fund. At that time, the finance people all sort of started saying, the sky's going to fall, the sky's going to fall, the sky's going to fall. And I think it's just taken a very, very long time because we started employing other measures to continue to provide services. Everybody became dependent on sales tax. Let's get business in, let's get tourists in. And then the internet world started up, where we're starting to see a decline in our sales tax because we're seeing greater usage of internet, and there's still a lot of transactions that we are not collecting sales tax on. So that was another area where we made an adjustment, and it's just taking its time to get here. Then we had initiative 776 that repealed the $15 local option vehicle excise tax. In 2002, the street fund was receiving $120,000. So that was another loss of revenue. Then in 2008, we had streamlined sales tax. The state was, it was really nice because the local governments that were severely impacted negotiated with the state of Washington to get a backfill for some of that revenue loss that we saw when we changed from point of sale to a point of delivery on our, our transactions.
That was my question. When did that happen?
2008. So we have been fortunate enough to receive $800,000. Now that $800,000 has been fairly constant since 2008. A couple of years ago, we saw a 3.4% reduction. So when you start looking at this, this all starts, you know, you can sort of see this little storm brewing where, you know, we, we, we're losing revenue on this one hand, and we're looking at trying to do more development, bring in other resources vis-à-vis sales tax. And then the last one was the liquor, liquor, liquor state shared revenue distributions. We lost some revenue in 2011. We, in 2011, we received $145,000, and in 2013, we received $42,000. So you can see that we have been making these course corrections for well, almost 15 years, and we keep sort of fixing things and fixing things and fixing things. Fortunately, we've never really reached a crisis, and we, so now we're still continuing to look at other options to continue to provide services.
So I appreciate that. This is actually very informative, a look back like that. I don't think I've seen it presented this way. So from your perspective, I appreciate that. I want to make sure I understand the streamlined, the 2008 change. And because in the other bullets, you kind of talk about what we used to receive and, or what we lost. We received backfill. What, I'm not sure what you mean by backfill.
Well, we had a lot of businesses that might be a manufacturing business, for instance, and when they shipped outside of the city of Issaquah, the transaction was to the benefit of the city of Issaquah. When they started shipping to a third-party location in another state or in another city, that sales tax went to that jurisdiction. And it happened a lot, it happens primarily in wholesale, in manufacturing. It'll happen in some, like furnitures, like, the best example is Macy's with the delivery truck. So Tuck Willa was a city hit particularly hard because they used to collect the sales tax at the Macy's-
Distribution center.
Regional center there. When they started delivering to all of the various communities, those communities are where the ones that benefited from the sales tax transaction. So what we did was, back in 2008, we started doing analysis, and all the cities worked with the Department of Revenue. We identified all the businesses we could at the time that we were beginning to see the changes. The state of Washington gave us databases, and then we had to analyze it and say, yes, that looks right, no, that looks wrong. And then that sort of became the foundation going forward.
And so, give me the basis for the $800,000 you showed there.
The 800, I couldn't, I was not here, and I couldn't find the data, but I can speak based upon other cities. So the $800,000 was what was presumed at that time to be the estimated loss for the city of Issaquah, based on the change of how consumer transactions were made.
In that one year, in 2008?
Yes.
Okay, and so, okay, thank you.
So it has not increased. And as you know, I think we have shared with you, in particular with the 2015 legislation, legislative session coming up at the state level, with some of the mandates that they have with the McLeary decision. This is really potentially in jeopardy. We have been working with Doug Levy to, we've had some conversations with the governor, stressing the importance of maintaining this funding source for us into the future. We've had some other meetings with our state legislators to explain to him that it funds some of our, a lot of our essential services. So we've been working really hard in anticipation of the 2015 legislative session to demonstrate that we really need to continue this source of funding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, because this was the topic that I was trying to get at. How much revenue were we losing when the streamlined sales tax came in? And if I understand correctly, Diane, we haven't virtually lost any because the city, the state has made up for it on an annual basis, based on metrics in 2008?
It's the transactions that occurred in 2008. So if you have a business that has grown or anything like that, we have not received any growth factor on that. But that would have been the estimate for what we believed we lost.
And every year-
We get that.
We get that. And so that amount, that $800,000, is at the mercy of the state of Washington budget process. Okey-dokey. Thank you.
So it's a whole different perspective. It was one of the things, I think I was sitting down with Bob, and I went, Bob, I said, you, I sort of had one of those aha moments. It's like, why, I keep trying to understand, why are we where we are at today? And it's sort of going back, starting in 1999, and looking at these different situations that have occurred. And one of the other things, particularly during this period of time, that would probably take a considerable amount of time, in amongst all those, particularly beginning in the mid 1990s, is when 601 came in, and also that's when the state began imposing what they call unfunded mandates. So when you add a loss of revenue, and on top of that, they have given us mandates that we have to do that without the associated revenue. So that was part of that other piece of the, the balance of some of the challenges of why we're here today with some of the recommendations.
Does that, $800,000 ever get updated, or?
Nope.
It's just a line item allocation in the budget, which, which is what makes us concerned that at any time, the state could simply just eliminate it. So, you know, as the finance director said, we've heard that part of the potential solution for McLeary is going to be what types of local revenues the state provides for revenue sharing, and that's one big one.
So one of the other things was sort of looking at, at a minimum, particularly with property taxes, you know, you could have flatlined that is, and prior to 2001, we could have been receiving our 6%. But at a minimum, when we look at overall growth in the expenditures for the general fund, they typically follow the line of the increase of the Consumer Price Index. So I was also trying to say, in, at a, at a minimum, maybe we shouldn't have collected the 6%, but at a, there's also the position that it also probably should maybe be tied to the CPI or some other index because our costs go up in relation to ship to the Consumer Price Index. So what you can see is from 2002, in the gold line is the Consumer Price Index, and the green line is our property taxes. And in many cases, you can see that period of time where the council chose not to impose the 1%. So it starts out, you can see how the, the delta could have funded a lot of different programs over the period of time. So we were just sort of curious to see how the CPI index compared to what we were claiming as far as the 1%. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob for a while.
Thank you. So as part of the budget process last year, there was a lot of discussion, presentation from the economic development director about the BNO tax. And so one of the items that the council discussed at that time was looking at, you know, jointly with the administration on the BNO tax. There's been no changes in the BNO tax since it was initially adopted in 2004. And so we worked together, the finance director and I, Keith Niven, along with council member Barbara and Paulie, on a review of the BNO tax. And so we've identified four kind of objectives of this review. One was to ensure the long-term financial sustainability of the city's revenues. Two is looking at opportunities to invest in infrastructure and deferred maintenance in the cities. And as, you know, these, we'll kind of go through and explain a little bit more on these things. Third was looking at opportunities to reduce red tape and the filing requirements that businesses have with the city. And then lastly, to continue to meet operational objectives, primarily services of the city. So this is a, and we talked quite a bit about this, review of the property tax from essentially 2004 to 2014. Most of that increased since, you know, she, as Diane talked about, the 1% revenue cap was a result of growth that occurred in the city. So most of that revenue adjustment there, from that 4.2 or 4.3 million up to what you see in 2010, up to 7 million, really reflects new growth that occurred in the city. This is the other, another primary source of revenue that the city gets. It's utility and gambling taxes. Do you want to talk a little bit about what this revenue kind of encompasses?
As I shared earlier, this is the revenue that we get from the various utilities, our electric, our gas, our telephone, our cable, and our water utility. Gas, electric, and phone are, we're at the statutory limit of 6%. So we collect the maximum on that. The city at one time, probably, I don't know, but I'm guessing around 2005, had a utility tax on its own utilities, and then the council, the then council took that tax off. So when I look at 2005, I'm guessing that's probably about, and going into 2006, that might, it looks like about the time perhaps that council then decided not to tax its own utility. Under state law, if you tax your own utility, there is no limit as to the percentage. There are some communities in the state that go as high as 20%. So it's really a matter of local policy and council desire. So you have some flexibility in there.
And gambling taxes are like pull tabs and stuff?
Pull tabs. Yeah. In some cities, it's card rooms, but we don't have any here.
So I think this, this slide is interesting. So this is pretty, pretty much the sales taxes that we've received. And so what you, one of the things I think that's important is in 2005, you can see we received almost $9 million in revenue from the sales tax. In the 2014 budget, we still haven't hit that number that we had in 2005. You can see the impact of the Great Recession there from 2008 down to 2011. And frankly, 2011 would have also been a flat year but for the fact that Swedish Hospital got built, and that bump was really a reflection of the sales tax revenue that was received on construction. One of the things that we'll be talking a little bit about is the fact that, you know, our economy has fundamentally changed. So we're now what, you know, traditionally, you would be, you'd be called a fully developed community. It's one of the things that we, reasons we adopted the central Issaquah plan. It's one of the things that we, reasons we adopted the Centralissqua plan. You know, all those opportunities for greenfield development that we saw on the Highlands and Talis are gone. And so, you know, you had a very land, very low land basis and all that construction on, on, all the sales tax on construction that occurred over that time period now is essentially gone. And so, what we're going to see is a lot more volatility in terms of overall construction because we may see a larger project like the hotel the Rowleys are building this year that'll generate some revenues. But it's not going to be a constant stream of built-out neighborhoods that will, essentially what we saw in Talis and Highland as those areas developed. So, going forward, you're really looking at generating revenue from sales tax from your existing retail base and then periodic, you know, the periodic larger projects that'll be coming forward as we see the Centralissqua plan redevelop. The second thing that's occurred is, you know, for a long time in the 90s, Issaquah was it for retail services. So, when you think of our retail base, our retail base in terms of where individuals came to shop, is that on now? Yep, I must have hit the button. So, if you went to Costco, you came to Issaquah, you know, at one time for retail. Now, you've got a Costco over in Covington. You look at some of the other retail development that's occurred in surrounding communities over in Redmond and over in, you know, Covington. And a lot of those individuals came to Issaquah to shop during that time. And so, we've essentially lost those sales within our community as a result of the development of those other areas. And then you can see the BNO tax, which was implemented in 2004, and we have seen some steady growth in the BNO tax during that timeframe. And we are proposing an adjustment in the BNO tax this year. And we'll go through a little bit more information on that in some later slides. Did you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to add, for 2014, we are close to our projection. We're running about maybe $50,000 ahead, behind same period of time compared to last year. So, it's, we're not seeing growth like we would have anticipated.
And then, the other revenues is just kind of a mix of?
It's primarily your charges for services, whether it's in our jail operation or in DSD, our municipal court. So, it's all those other operating departments that have what we call charges for services.
So, one of the things that's interesting about this is, and it's not split out, but you can, to some extent, start to foresee where some of the development's going to occurring in future years because there's a lag effect of when the permit revenue comes in versus when the actual construction gets built. And so, we saw in 2012 to 2013, an increase in revenues that occurred from, you know, planned new construction during that time period. But going into 2014, that's flat. And then, the DSD department is also forecasting a relatively, well, decrease if not flat revenues for construction going into next year as well.
On the sales tax, do we know what proportion of the sales and use tax is this construction tax and how much of it is retail?
19% is construction. And the retail portion, I'm not sure, off the top of my head.
What would be the other one besides retail?
Wholesaleing, or printing services, or accommodations, or, but I would say the majority of the sales tax primarily is retail.
And, you know, to give an example, you know, when the whole Highlands retail development got built, the projected revenue that came off of that from sales tax was expected to be about $350,000. I think we about hit that, didn't we? So, even that large development is only generating $350,000 in revenue per year. And as we go through the budget, you'll see, it's the example I've liked to use, but, you know, police department, for example, costs us $9 million a year, of which 90% of that costs is approximately salary because it's a very high intensive use. So, just giving a 3% pay increase to our police department officers generates about a $270,000 annual increase just in salary costs for one department. So, if you start to spread that to a couple of other departments, you'll see that, you know, you're going to need a new Highlands development every year just to be able to keep up with that base. And that's not, that's not going to happen. That's not, the likelihood of that isn't going to happen. We just don't have the land to do that anymore. So...
I was going to say, normally in our quarterly report, we provide a graph that shows a breakdown of the sales tax distribution. So, that's, if you want more information, we can...
Another piece of that is, I think, one of, is just the circulation effect. So, even though we added, you know, that additional retail up there, it's hard to tell, you know, pinpoint exactly, but you look at, you know, we added a, some of the stores that end up going there, we have competing stores within the city. So, I'm sure some of that isn't necessarily new wealth or new sales generated. Some of it's just going to be redistribution of sales within the community itself. Can we go back to, can we go back to the previous slide just for a second? So, we revamped, you said, fees for services. So, we revamped our development, our DSD fees substantially in the last budget cycle. Would that 2014 number sort of have cratered, had we not done that?
Cratered?
Cratered. Cratered, dropped off.
It did already. The 2014, this is the budget, and when I did our estimate, we actually reviewed, reduced our development by about a half a million dollars for 2014. So, while we did that fee increase between, we just didn't see the development and it didn't occur the way we had anticipated.
All right, thank you. So, this is a graph of the amount of, a number of BNO taxpayer accounts that we have, and then essentially what they pay every year. So, we're proposing two amendments, well, two here on this slide regarding exemptions. So, one of those is raising the exemption level. Right now, it's $20,000 annually or $5,000 a quarter, and raising that exemption up to $100,000 annually. By raising that exemption, approximately 1,380 taxpayers will now be exempt from paying BNO taxes on an annual basis. What that reflects is those individual businesses that essentially pay $100 or less per year in BNO taxes to the city. They would now be exempt, they have to file on an annual basis, and they'll still have to file on an annual basis because we got to verify for audit purposes that they don't, you know, they don't meet the income threshold.
It's just an informational return.
Right. But, you know, at least they, a lot of times, we found that some of the individuals were paying more on the penalty for failing to file on time than what their actual tax was. So, it didn't make a lot of sense to continue to do that. So, we have approximately 4,500 active BNO tax accounts in the city. And we set up the categories in a way because we have to be cognizant of privacy rules within the state of how those various corporations are paying BNO taxes to the city. They're split into six categories in terms of classification. We have 39 manufacturers that are paying the BNO tax, 447 wholesalers, 1,078 retailers, eight printing and publishers, 174 retail services, and then professional services and others, 928. So, manufacturing, for example, would be the Dairy Gold or the, you know, Lakeside paving, for example, would be manufacturers that would be falling under that classification. Wholesaleing may include some car dealers, would include Costco Wholesale Club, other wholesale types of activities, retailers. Obviously, you have some small retail businesses that may be represented like on Front Street or Gilman Village, up to the big boxes that you see there in Home Depot and Fred Meyer. Small printers, we don't have very many of those. The retail services may include, that might be like just a landscaping business. And then, professional services and others are those consulting businesses, legal businesses, medical type, or, you know, medical consulting, maybe some businesses along those lines.
So, when you look at the, just for the numbers, if you see that we have accounts by tax bracket, you'll see 2,603, and then below that, you'll see 2,674. The difference is, is you could have a business reporting in multiple categories. And so, that, the count down below is the reporting categories, and the middle section is the filing, the number of filings. And I think for those members that have been on council, the categories, the reporting, the business classifications are pretty, are a standard set of classifications that all the BNO tax cities agreed to many years ago. In our code, I think we have a section called 5.04 in our IMC, and it's called the Model BNO Tax Ordinance because it's, it is the standardization. Because what businesses wanted several years ago was, cities, do it all the same. You know, don't have a different, don't be creating different classifications so that when, if you're like a Fred Meyer or something and you're doing business in multiple communities, standardize the classification so that there is consistency and it makes it easier for the business to do the filing. So, we have all committed to those classifications.
Any questions on that chart? Good, okay. So, this is the proposal that we have in the various categories. So, in the third column, you'll see what the current rate is under the existing ordinance and what the proposed rate is under the ordinance. And so, we are proposing a two-step adjustment that would take place in 2015 and then April 1st, 2015, and then January 1, 2017 for manufacturing and wholesaling. So, the first change we're proposing is to go from .008 to .0015 effective April 1, 2015 for manufacturing and wholesaling. And then, retailing is at .008, would go up to .0015, April 1, 2015. And then, printing, publishing, retail services, and services and other would go from .001 up to .0012. The fifth column is a reflection of the current revenue that we receive from those various categories. And the 2015 column reflects what the new revenue sort, what the new revenues we would anticipate coming in, just assuming a straight-line appreciation. So, obviously, it's going to be not exactly that amount because businesses have variances in the amount of revenues they have on an annualized basis. But taking a straight-line, you know, account, that's what we would anticipate. And then, in 2017, with the final adjustment, we would see that change in manufacturing and wholesaling with the overall variance reflected from what we're currently collecting, again, just using a straight line to what we would now, you know, the marginal adjustment in that final year.
When's the effective date in 2017?
January 1st. The other piece that we did, which you've probably noticed there in the agenda bill that made some pretty significant changes in the exemptions. And what it really was related, related to was that previously, the city had just a blanket exemption for all 501(c)(3) nonprofits. And that included medical facilities or medical services. And so, what we are proposing is no longer exempting medical services. So, for example, Overlake, Virginia Mason, potentially Swedish Hospital, and some of the other medical services that are currently exempt from the ordinance because they were 501(c)(3) would now be taxed under this proposal. And so, as a result of that, we had to go through, and we used the city of Seattle as, because they also tax medical services as an example to go through and make sure we capture all the various exemptions that previously had just been covered under the 501(c)(3) exemption. So, the, the ordinance is going to be quite a bit longer than it was before, but that was the purpose behind it. And then, again, the increase in the filing threshold, $200,000. There is the issue of, and do you want to talk a little bit about the religious institution exemption that may impact that for hospitals?
Those hospitals that are 501(c)(3) that have a religious affiliation, they are not taxed under federal law, so they would be exempt from the BNO tax.
So, what category do they fall under?
Services and sales. Retailing and...
Perhaps multiple?
Yes.
Retail, services, and?
Retailing and retail services, and potentially other services, depending on what they're doing. So, if they were doing physical therapy, for instance, that would be under services.
I got a question. On the filing threshold increase, is there a line or a number that you have which has the estimated loss variance? In other words, when you aggregate the 1,000 and however many on the previous slide who will now be exempt, there's presumably going to be an aggregate loss variance that will offset the positive variance. So, how much is that figure?
We're estimating it's around $100,000.
Okay.
For that one-third of the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
But that's reflected in your overall variance?
Yes.
Good, thanks.
Nina?
Okay, so, back to the 501(c)(3)'s. They've been exempted, and they always were, right? The 501(c)(3)'s. But what we're doing is removing the exemption for medical services over this threshold, exempt those that are affiliated with a religious mission.
Correct. Good summation.
So, and, so why was that distinction made?
What distinction?
That medical services with a religious affiliation are different than other medical services.
That's because that, under state, under federal law, they're tax exempt, so we can't...
Anyway.
Yeah.
So, it's like a church, you know, we're not allowed to tax them.
Okay. And I thought that was the case for 501(c)(3)'s, that's why I'm asking. No? Okay. Okey dokey. Thank you.
The other point, and you know, we'll probably be bringing an amendment because one of the things that, in conversations with Bob, we're, in reading through this, I'm not sure there, we need to include an exemption for the Village Theater. Because as it stands, they would not, the way the language currently reads, they would not be exempted from a tax. So, we would have to come back with an amendment to include them under the exemption.
It was not our intent to include them, but I think when we used the city of Seattle model ordinance, they didn't exempt their theaters in town. And so, it just didn't get caught in the first drafting. But as we went through and reviewed it, we discovered that was the case. And so, our intent was that the Village Theater would not, would not be, I mean, they would be exempt, they would not be subject to the tax.
And they're currently not.
And they're currently not paying the tax. Okay, next page. So, one of the things that you see, that you saw earlier in the book, and we want to give you a little perspective on, was the city employment that's occurred since 2008. And so, we have had to do a number of things over the last several years. We've had two layoffs that occurred during that timeframe. We did a reorganization of our planning, building, and, planning and building departments into a new development services division. And then, we also, during that same time, knew that we had to change, given, one, that we were moving to a redevelopment model instead of a greenfield development model, and, two, meeting the services that our residents are expecting. So, you know, when it comes to communication, social media, all those types of services, we still had a need and desire to be able to communicate to our residents in that fashion. And so, we also, even, even though that reflects total employment, we have cut additional positions and we've added some positions, but those new adds were generally as a result of repurposing the money that had been, you know, filling us a position before. And then, that repurposed money went to fill like the social media coordinator or the two economic development managers that we have on the city. One of the things as well was that we used to have an MDRT, and that was fully funded by development costs. So, Port Blakely and Talis essentially paid for all those expenses. And... And with the wind down of the villages, those positions then no longer were receiving those revenues. And those four individuals that are in that department now are fully funded by the general fund. So we had one individual back in 2007 that the city created, which was our Economic Development Manager. We obviously, as part of the reorg, created a much more robust economic development program and outreach to the community. And it's just the, the fact is the challenges involved with redevelopment is a lot more difficult than it is to, to just build off a, you know, plain piece of property. As I think Diane already talked about, really the changes that occurred from 2013 to 2014 and even in, from 2012 to 2013 have primarily been additions to the police department, you know, public safety services during that time. And then in 2014, two of those positions, we had previously contracted out for inspection services and then we brought that back in-house and used our, our own city inspectors and DSD.
I got a question for me. There's a table in the budget at page 4-12 that I, I had a question about, so I might as well ask it because it's tied into this. How is number of payroll employees different than city employment? Because that table shows what I consider a pretty significant jump between 2012 and 2013 in quote-unquote "number of payroll employees." And then I look at this chart that just says "city employment" and the numbers are a lot lower.
So there, what's reflected in that is, this is a consolidated number. And so these are, so you may have a part-time, non-regular that, like a lifeguard that works eight hours a week, you know, and you take that on an annualized basis. So they would be considered a payroll employee, but you have to take that as a percentage and roll that up into FDEs. And so with that is, is full-time equivalencies.
And also during the summertime, our payroll can go up to an additional 200 people working on a part-time basis.
So summer day camp would be an example of that, for example?
Okay.
Actually, can I, can I just comment on that? The statement that you made that most of that growth looked to be police, it actually looks to be about half police and half DSD. Right? DSD is, they've both grown about three and a half FDEs.
Yeah, that's what I meant. So two of those were the inspectors and DSD. And then there was a senior planner, and then the other ones were in the police department. So...
Right, two more officers and some associated.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think there were three over time, but...
Been three new officers since I've been here.
But it may have been, again, one of the things they did was kind of reallocate based on, so they took some admin positions and they put some of that money into, whether it was a record supervisor or putting it on the street for patrol. So there was some, I think, variances there.
All right. Well, they, they call out officers and they go from 19 to 21. Okay.
Okay. So coming back to the theme of the fact that we're pretty much fully developed, these are the remaining annexations that exist in our, the city's PAA. So Lake Sammamish State Park, which obviously we're in the process of doing that annexation now. The East Cougar Mountain Potential Annexation Area, which is on my left. And then the, what we call the King County Island, which is essentially, there's a roads, county roads facility that's located just directly up the hill from our road maintenance facility. That's in King County, they never annexed into the city. You know, the Kohani area was part of our PAA, now that is in the process of being removed from the PAA and moved into Sammamish. So we don't have, unless, unless the county ends up changing the growth boundary, we really don't have any, you know, future potential growth in the city other than redevelopment, what's already existing there. And this is just a comparison of per capita revenue to several cities. Do you want to talk a little bit about this one, Diane?
So this was some work that we had done for a study for the state legislators. We were asked earlier this year to collaborate with a number of cities to help the state legislator understand what's been happening to us over the years. And once we pulled this data together and then did a comparison with the other cities, I was actually quite surprised to look at how we fared compared to everyone else. So this, this includes all of our revenue sources in the general fund as well as our special revenue funds. And you can see that in comparison, the other communities, we have seen the most dramatic decrease in our revenue stream on a per capita basis. And part of it is because of annexations and just an increase in development, but it does tell a very interesting story about how our per capita revenue has changed compared to the surrounding communities.
Sorry, can I, can I ask one question with that?
Sure.
How did our friends in North and Redmond manage to buck the trend?
That part I don't know. I mean, you know, individually, what's happened to those other communities, I really don't know.
You know, one of the things that might be interesting, so the Redmond Town Center obviously developed during that timeframe. And then, I'm not sure when they instituted the, was it before that time? Before 2004? So I'm kind of guessing. The other piece I would think would be, I'm not sure when they instituted the head tax. So that may have occurred during some, you know, during that time.
Yeah.
They do a per, per employee tax in Redmond. And matter of fact, one of the things they've proposed for their budget next year is a $15 increase in the per employee head tax.
You know, I, I have to say, this is actually one of the most interesting charts I think I've ever seen on council. Because if you look at the services we provide, you know, we go to toe-to-toe with, you know, there's, there's lots of great communities in the state. But I mean, just to, to see this, it really is amazing to me and, and just speaks to how efficient the city is.
Now, you mentioned this includes the utility revenues.
No, our special revenues, which would be like our admissions tax and our lodging tax, but it's not our utilities. It's just our general fund plus some of our smaller operations.
Okay, and so, and so that's true then across for all of these? We're comparing apples to apples?
Yes. It's not all of those cities have utility operations. So that sort of leaves us on the B and O tax conversations unless there's more questions or you...
Well, the one thing, slide that wasn't up there, and I asked Jen to come this evening, and she's going to speak a little bit about our outreach to the community that we've already begun to do. So Jen Davis is our, you want to grab a seat?
Good evening. So we are actually, we've worked with the chamber, we've been to the chamber several times to the board to talk about the proposal as it has developed. And we, as of last Tuesday morning, have sent a letter out to all the B and O taxpayers for the city of Issaquah. And so that explained about the changes and told them about the two open houses that we're going to be having over in the Eagle Room on Tu, next Tuesday, October 14th. That one's going to be in the morning between 7:30 and 9:00, and we can send you this information. And then the next one will be on Monday, October 27th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. So we wanted to make sure we had one in the morning, one in the evening, so that business owners could choose a time that works best for them to come and hear more from us about the B and O tax changes. And so we'll have a lot of the same information that we had here in this presentation. And Diane and Bob and myself, as well as Sheldon Lynn, will be there to answer any questions they may have. And also, I should mention that we are, Bob and myself will be meeting with the largest, the larger B and O taxpayers individually and talking to them. So we actually had one of those meetings and, and will continue to work down that list.
Question?
Does that include new B and O, potential new B and O taxpayers?
Yes.
Which is hospitals?
Yes, hospitals, yes.
And I thought that there was one more touch point with the chamber. I thought there was one more meeting, their ad hoc committee or something that was going to happen?
Oh, perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, it was certainly discussed with the chamber president, and what we haven't gotten yet is confirmation of when that meeting would be.
Okay. That was easy. All right, I'm leaving.
You, you want to continue on? You want to take a quick two-minute break? Five-minute break?
Yeah, let's do that. When that clock up there, when the big hand's on the 26 after, we'll start again.
Thank you.
Welcome back from the commercial break.
All right, we're ready to talk.
We're going to continue. So Charlie Bush from Development Services is here. Welcome, Charlie. And Chris, welcome.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and cover the technology surcharge that's proposed in the budget. And you have an agenda bill as well that was referred to this meeting, so it should be as a part of your packet. So currently, we have a 1.3% fee that's tacked, it's an E-Plan surcharge, it's tacked on to permits. And it's a pass-through for the E-Gov Alliance. It basically covers the, the cost of mybuildingpermit.com, which is a core service the E-Gov Alliance put in place many years ago. It really is what started the E-Gov Alliance. And what we're proposing to do is increase that fee to 5%. One of the key reasons for that is E-Gov Alliance fees have changed and there's been a significant increase. And there's new inter-local agreement. And mybuildingpermit.com is essentially being rebuilt. There are a bunch of technology investments that are being made. We're looking to cover those. Otherwise, we would be having to absorb a significant amount of that into our budget. So we're looking to increase the fee and that would also allow us to make some other technology investments that are needed in the department. We could talk about those in more detail as we go. So this fee would specifically be on development-related services. We ran a few example projects through, found that it was anywhere between a 1% to a 3.6% increase, depending on the type of project. And we actually have a handout that Christopher's provided around to you with some more detail that he'll cover in a second. Basically, this would help us streamline our processes. In the agenda bill, as an attachment, is a, an attachment from, a letter from my, from the Master Builders Association, which basically supports the 5% increase. Other cities have been going through the same experience. A couple of other cities... A couple of other cities are at 5% currently. Bothell and Snoqualmie are the other two. Kirkland recently, or is in the process of going to 3.5%. A number of other cities are at 3. But as the increase for eGov comes through, cities are gradually making adjustments as they go through their budget process to try to absorb the increase. And the Master Builders' Letter actually mentions looking at efficiencies and budget reductions and things to help absorb the cost of the eGov increase. So they mentioned 5%, but then they also talk about Kirkland's 3.5%. Through this budget process, we went through a pretty exhaustive experience in Development Services of going line item by line item and identified over $150,000, almost $200,000 in savings. So we've been through that process, but even with that, we're still in need of taking a look at this fee increase to help absorb.
I'm sorry, Charlie?
Yes.
Could you say a little bit more about this savings you identified, or?
So we went through our budget line item by line item in detail this time around, and identified savings in a variety of line items in our budget. And so when you look at our, once you get into expenditures at some point, you'll see, when you look at the Development Services budget, that it's essentially flat. It's actually gone down a little bit. So despite increases in wages and benefits and other things, you'll see that it's pretty well flat. So we're providing similar level of service with last month. That's the proposal for 2015. So with that said, the estimated revenue increase is...
Another question, excuse me.
Yes.
Stacy has a question.
Yes.
Can you explain a little more about what you mean by funding to get to me to streamline our processes?
Yes. So technology is a really key efficiency tool, and our technology systems are critical to helping us with that. Mybuildingpermit.com in particular is super helpful to the business community. It's also super helpful to us. For example, if somebody wants to schedule an inspection, they go on mybuildingpermit.com, they schedule that inspection, and it automatically pops onto the calendar of our inspectors, and they show up at work in the morning with their list, and they go out and they do their inspections. The alternative to that would be something where they'd call in, they have to talk to somebody, get on the calendar, might take some back and forth, and it's a lot less efficient. So technology really does fuel a lot of what we do and how we do it, and that's an example of certainly how it's helping us. Yes, there are other items, there are some investments, and I don't want to steal Christopher's thunder here, so I'm going to save that for him. There are a variety of projects that I'm going to actually turn it over to him right now, I had to cover.
All right, thank you. I gave you a handout just a moment ago, and I'll kind of summarize it real quickly. In the colored bar chart that you see there, basically, everything up until the line that's between the orange and the green line, everything that's listed there, those are all things that we currently spend money on, that we currently do, and that we need to continue to do. And the difference is that right now, we're only taking in 1.3%, and that's just a pass-through that goes to the eGov Alliance. So all of those other things, between the 1.3% and where that green line is, is coming out of the general fund. And so that's part of what I wanted to explain. And then beyond the green line, beyond stuff that we're currently doing, we've given two examples that we would put that money towards. And one would be for reserves for major projects, and then the other significant project would be for document scanning and document management system, for scanning our archives and then managing those documents. And so, and just to give you an idea of kind of the projects that fall into either of those categories, with regard to reserves, an example that I'll use is several years ago, when we had been using this particular permit tracking software, Permit Plan, for many years, and we liked it, worked real well, but with a pretty short notice, the company that was supporting that said, "We're not going to support that anymore." And so we pretty quickly had to find a new program and pay for that, and find the funding for it. And so we don't want to be in that position again, and we don't want to put you in that position again. So that's an example of what that reserve would be for. Another example would be, you know, we're still, we're pretty early in the electronic plan review stage, you know, and it's really been phenomenally successful and well-received, not just by internally, by the permit technicians and planner reviewers, but the applicants are really appreciating and seeing the benefits of it. So that's just going to continue to grow and expand. Like I said, we're in the early stages of it, and with any technology thing, as you know, the more we get into it, the deeper we get into it, the more we'll find, you know what? If we had this other program, or if we had this other component, it would be even better. So, you know, we just know that that's what's going to happen. So those are a couple of examples of what could be in the reserves. With regard to the document managing and the archive scanning, as it says here, the overall cost estimate that we have for that is $150,000. We know it'd be hard to get all of that at once, so we would spread it out over a few years. And as far as the necessity of that is, as far as that goes, as somebody, you know, who has dedicated his life to improving our processes and making them more efficient, I think that is just an essential piece, and we need to get going on it. The inefficiency of having archive boxes all over City Hall Northwest is just too much. So that's what those pieces mean, and where we propose to be using that 5%. And another good example that's related to what Charlie talked about is handheld, what's the?
Tablets, iPads, basically, for inspectors.
For the inspectors, yeah. Because one of the things, again, as we've gotten into doing more things electronically, we've realized that not only can these inspections come in electronically, as Charlie was describing, but now the field inspectors would be able to sign off and write corrections and everything just from tablets in the field. So it is all for efficiency.
One of the things, if I might add, you know, particularly document imaging and document storage is not just unique to Development Services. This last budget, when the departments were submitting their requests, I would say probably three other departments put requests in for document imaging. So it's very expensive to get into it initially, but at some point in time, you know, I know the city clerk has, you know, we've had some conversations about the whole document management system. So we actually, they are a good starting point, but I just wanted to make sure the council understood that this is really a citywide issue that will be coming forward over the years.
Thank you. Christopher? Just to make sure I understand your paper correctly here. So the full colored bar represents all of the programs and initiatives, elements that are technology-related costs, and what we could cover with a 5% surcharge.
Right.
And then each of the colored bands, that's the legend down below tells you, you know, what they are now. And so halfway between the 3% and the 4% is approximately 3.5%. So what's, what I don't understand is the, I think you were referencing that point, but what's the purpose of the 80,000, 100,000, 120,000? What's the x-axis values? What do they represent? Okay, so we have 140-plus thousand revenue in the budget, and it represents a technology surcharge of up to 5%. And this is the breakdown of how that all will be applied, overlaid with the amounts per component, if I can call it that. Okay. All right, thank you.
Is that it?
I think the one thing I just want to say is, you know, there is already a, at least one position, and that they are going to be down next year. And so the more that we can continue to make these investments in technology to make the department more efficient, the flatter the organization is, and unfortunately, has been going, as we're seeing continued development drop. So if we can continue to work towards, you know, getting all that paper that's been, you know, implemented and provided to us over the years, and make it optical character recognition, and make it much more searchable and efficient for our staff, that's going to help us a lot, so.
I'm sorry.
Our next topic is the Agenda Bill 6907. It's the Parks and Recreation Resident/Non-Resident Fee. And I wanted to ask if you've all had a chance to read and review it. I'm seeing a no from Nina. Okay, this proposal in front of you, this Agenda Bill in front of you, in an effort to increase revenues in the city, our staff researched regional recreation fees to learn more about resident/non-resident fee structures. Our staff researched Bellevue, Covington, Kirkland, Maple Valley, Mercer Island, Redmond, Renton, Semamish, Seattle, and the Seiveu Metropolitan Park District up in North Bend. And on the back of your Agenda Bill is the research from all those cities, as well as a really nice picture of our basketball kids. Anyhow, what we found is that it's, the differential is usually 20% between residents and non-residents. And so that's what was presented in the mayor's budget. We would have to phase this in, because we begin advertising actually for 2015 right now. We have a lot of residents who are very, very organized, and they want to assign up their children for things ahead of time. So this would be a phased approach, and we would not have all the fees implemented probably till next year at this time. Any questions?
I just wanted to add a comment. So philosophically, because the Parks and Recreation Department doesn't recover 100% of their, you know, cost through fees, so essentially, a general fund or taxes are paying to help underwrite some of the costs, and so that's the philosophical basis for the 20% surcharge.
So in, and the last bullet says, "may not be applicable to the pool." Could you explain?
That's correct. We're researching our 1994 King County Interlocal Agreement, signed almost exactly 20 years ago, and we're having our legal department review that. When we took on that pool, there was a paragraph in there about not raising, or not having non-resident fees, and so we're going to review that.
In perpetuity?
There was that phrase, "in perpetuity," there, Paul.
Oh, no.
So we'll see. We'll see what Wayne finds out.
Yeah, part of the philosophy is, one has ceased being the old pool, and one is in a new pool. And so essentially, we're building a new pool under an old structure, and I think that's the kind of legal aspect that we've asked Wayne to look at.
Is there any consideration for perhaps neighboring jurisdictions? I think it's Semamish particularly, where we have a lot of residents who may take advantage of programs.
Is there any consideration for discussions with Semamish particularly? Suppose it could apply to others. We have a lot of residents who take advantage of programs in neighboring jurisdictions, and, you know, is there any potential for an interlocal where they don't charge our folks, we don't charge their folks, but this only applies to non-residents of other cities, so that we can actually partner with our neighbor? And then there's a reciprocity perhaps involved, where our residents save money, and theirs save money that way?
You know, we haven't considered that, Joshua, but we certainly could.
It's just part of our ongoing partnership with our neighbors in Semamish particularly.
I think you'd also probably want to look at the degree that another neighboring community has a fully developed Parks and Rec program. Typically, your older communities have your stronger Parks and Rec programs. The newer cities rely on typically YMCA's to deliver those programs. So trying to find an apples-to-apples comparison would be important.
You know, Bob, you used the word philosophical or whatever to explain the 20%. Of course, in the Agenda Bill, you know, it says it's based upon research comparing. We see the data here, we compare. I'm going to ask you to repeat the philosophical comment.
So, thanks. So primarily, because fees don't cover 100% of the cost affiliated with recreation programs, the general fund or our local taxpayers are essentially paying for the variance, the marginal variance between the revenue received from the users and the expenses affiliated with the program. And so because non-residents aren't paying direct taxes to the community, the variance is to cover those, that kind of in supplement to the general fund.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it didn't explain the actual number of 20%. That's, and I didn't think you were trying to explain that. It's just, you know, and, yeah, the basis is really clear, so that's all. Thank you.
One of the things I would share with the council is, the community I live in doesn't have a Parks and Rec program, and I'm an avid student of golf lessons. I take a lot of golf lessons, and that might explain why I'm not very good at golf, but I'm more than happy to pay that 20% surcharge to my neighboring community in order to get those golf lessons, so. And it really doesn't seem, it's not that much when you're maybe looking at golf lessons of $35, so.
Thank you.
Good job, Brian.
We got a couple more things on general fund expenditures.
So it was really interesting, because we spent a lot of times, I think, setting the foundation for this council in previous years, and really talking through the expenditures. And so when I was preparing on the expenditure side, I was having a hard time coming up with a really interesting story to talk about what's different compared to the 2014 budget. So a lot of this is actually going to go rather quickly. When we gave the budget instructions, because we knew we needed to restrict the growth in the overall operations, the instructions to the department was, the finance department would budget for the applicable salaries and benefits based upon the information that we have. And then the departments had only a 1% increase in what we call their discretionary items. So that would be everything outside of salaries and benefits. So they only received a 1% increase. So when you see some of these variances, it's, you know, in some cases, if you have a rather, what I would call, a young department, where you have newer employees, you know, the employees would get a salary increase, and as well, they would get their annual merit increase if they met that. So that's why some of them would be higher than other ones, where if you have a more senior department, they're at the top of their salary range. So in looking at the various departments, when you sort of go down the list, and you look at the variances, and we'll talk about the ones in the next slide, the ones, but the first thing is, I would encourage you to spend a little bit of time in going through your budget and looking at the accomplishments and the work programs for the departments. I think within the existing resources of each of the departments, they're all striving to make their departments better, and they all have, are all including, new types of programs or new efficiencies, or something to make it a little bit better for either their customers or internal, for their internal customers or their external customers. So when I start going down the list, there's really not much to say about the Legislative Department. The only thing that's interesting in the municipal court is they're looking at taking that one court security officer and making it a regular part-time person. And the Executive Office is just pretty much business as usual. There's really, there's no special funding for any special programs. The same thing in the Finance Department. The one thing we have a slight increase is because of the cost of the municipal system and our annual monthly fee that we'll be paying.
Don't you also have the project manager?
The project manager is funded outside of the general fund because we had set some money aside, so it doesn't impact the general fund. What we did was we, over the years, as part of the equipment rental fund, we've been collecting money for the last, the previous finance director, for like the last 10 years, they've been setting money aside in order to do this eventual replacement. So.
Nice.
The legal department we'll be talking about, they've had, they'll see an increase, so we'll be talking a little bit more specifically about them. Support services, their increase, there's some cost if you, when we get down to the city clerk, you'll see the city clerks transferred some of their operating cost to the support services. So really, and their overall delta increase is not significant. Human resources, business as usual. The IT, we, pretty much business as usual. We had hoped to fund, they originally were a department of five and a half FTEs, and currently they're at three FTEs with some external resources to provide them with day-to-day PC help. Originally, in, when we started going down and developing the budget, we were hopeful that we could keep the PC tech, bring that position back in-house. But when we were trying to balance the budget, we weren't able to commit to that position. City clerk, no changes there. The police department, not a significant increase in part of their increases. They have been hiring a lot of new officers. So compared to a couple of years ago when we had senior officers, they're coming at the lower scale, and so their overall increase is small. Fire department is our largest increase. Communication, very constant. Human services, we have the, we'll talk about them a little bit more. Development services, Charlie said he was flat, and he is, but what that really is, that's that expedited review. So it's the revenue coming in and the money going out for third-party review that the developers pay for. Economic development, flat. Parks and Rec, they've actually gone down, we'll be talking about that in their reorg, and then non-departmental went up. So it's a part of our next conversation, well, before we go. So part of our conversation is, the budget though, went up 8%. You know, it went up 2.9 million. So that's really, when you take all those departments, they're pretty much constant. So where are we going to have the conversation? And the conversation's going to be on the next slide. So what I tried to do was to say, okay, what's different between '14 and '15 that's causing the budget to go up 7%, which effectively is about a $2.9 million increase? That $2.9 million is part of the challenge that we had in trying to balance the budget. When you look at most of these items that we're discussing, they're really outside of the city's control. Those are things that we simply have to pay for services versus going in and maybe eliminating a line of business or reducing services. So the overall change between the '14 and '15 budget is 2.9 million. Of that, we have two items where there is an increased expense, but there is an associated revenue to pay. So it accounts for the overall increase in expenditures, but there's an offsetting revenue. So that's our expedited review for the development services. It's budgeted at 1.79 million. And then our drug-free coalition grant. One of the things about the drug-free coalition grant, originally, we thought we were just simply going to be their fiscal agent and pay their bills. Once we got the grant agreement, we came to understand that the grant award was really to us as a municipality, and they became our, a sub-recipient of the grant. So that's just money in and money out. So then the real conversation in my mind, as far as the 2015 general fund budget, is around these items that are up here. So the first item is legal fees at 182,000 above what we had. These are items above what we had originally anticipated, and the first one is primarily because of our public defense. We have increased the costs 40% over what we're seeing. There is some conversation at the state level that that amount could actually go up to 100%. So we sort of took the middle of the road that our cost for, per case for public defense could double from around $250, $250 to $300 a case to $450. So that one is sort of a wait and see. We went ahead and did a 40% increase. Fire and EMS is going up 607,000 over the 2014 budget. Part of that is the overall increase in the operating budget, and then as we've shared with the council, it's also the reallocation of the delivery of services with Station 78 because they're opening up this new station. We then have to absorb more costs for Station 72. Arch dues went up more than the projected 3%. They went up an additional 13,000. Charlie and Christopher talked about our eGov fees. They went up 49,500 higher. We had to, we provided funding for the full-time human services manager, which is 56,000.
Question about that. Does this reflect just an increase over the 2014 budget? Or is it, this is the increase over 2014, or is this the total amount? It's the increase?
This is just the net increase.
Right.
So legal fees for public defense will probably be...
I meant specifically about the human services manager.
Oh.
Because it wasn't funded full year.
Last year, we funded it for this year, just for half a year, right?
And this, yes, and in this proposal, it's a full year, January 1st hiring, assuming, you know, we're not going to begin recruitment or anything until the budget's done, but we would anticipate, you know, it's full year funded.
But, but our total authorized positions in 2015 is down, and how can we list this out if we're actually down aggregate staff? Don't you then, if you, if you have to put that line in there, then you also have to subtract out the positions that you've taken out, right?
That's what I, next slide.
Well, then, all right.
She's a bad news first and good news later.
All right. We said, Tom is going to ask this question. Thank you very much. On the slide.
The one thing we, as the organization becomes downsized, rightsized, whatever sizing you want to call it, it becomes harder and harder when we have some of our senior folks retiring or separating from service. In the past, because we've had some sufficient resources, when a person has retired, we have been able to hold that position vacant until such time as we cost-recover that payout. So if somebody left in January and we had sick leave and vacation and anything else that we had to pay them, and let's say it was $60,000, then we would hold that position vacant until we had recovered it. But as we are eliminating and downsizing that, for many of our departments, that becomes a hardship. And if you're in a department of three or four people and you have to hold that position vacant for a year, services will suffer and things will not get done. So we, I put in 300,000 to assist the departments based upon the number of retirements we believe will happen. This does not fully fund it. It probably funds it about 65%. So the departments would still have to hold the positions vacant for a while, but that, but it would be manageable because they would probably have that position vacant while they're going through a recruitment. So, so what we've, you know, we put in that budget, that ability to help those departments for those known or expected retirements. Then we have the funding of the council goals on the drug-free community, they're your goal, so that was 70,000. Funding for the street operations, we have been using the cash balance in the fund over the last several years in the street operating fund, and we sort of have ran out of money. And so now we have to infuse some additional money to maintain their level of service, and that was above and beyond what I had anticipated when we started working with the numbers. And so that was an additional 483,000. And then we had been funding the ORCA program out of sustainability, and it is more applicable to a general, the departments and where those employees reside. And with the majority of the employees, this is an additional obligation in the general fund of 40,000. So that sort of explains the, the difference. And you can see that we have a difference to the good in the sense that the net difference is 1.7 million, but the new funding request was 1.8 million. So how did we get there? What we did was we had savings, particularly in Parks and Recreation. So the reorganization of the Aquatics Division, the future long-term savings is around 293,000. It'll be a little slightly less this coming year because we'll have some payouts that we'll have to do. We also have the elimination of the city arborist, long-term savings is of 125,000. We, what we did was for those instances where we might need to bring a professional in, we gave them an additional 30,000 in their professional services if they had to bring an arborist in for a particular task. Part, and we're not filling the senior planner and the assistant planner position, so that's the savings over 2014 of 225,000. Part of it in our conversation with Charlie is because he's actually seen some decreased activity, he felt comfortable holding those positions. Now, if development activity that is above and, that is the traditional development activity, not the expedited, then we would come to you and say, we're seeing an increase in development activity, there is an offsetting revenue to help support that position, and we would like to fund that position.
Do I recall correctly Charlie saying just earlier this evening that they're actually delivering similar or more services with less staff? Did I remember, did I hear that?
He did.
That seems in conflict with you just said, that he was forecasting less demand.
Well, because he's down those positions that he originally was authorized, so he's doing work that in, that he had more people for in the past. And going forward, he says, I can, those positions just recently became vacant, and he said, I can hold them vacant.
And I would say it's a combination. So when we went through, we did a kaizen event for both our land use process and our building permit processing. And so, for example, the land use processing, we cut 100, I think 100 days off the amount of time, the cycle time that was involved with, you know, once it hit the city to when the actual permit is issued. So some of that is efficiency that we're seeing. The second piece of that is we're just expecting less development to occur. So we're able to, you know, as a result of some of the less development, we're able to cut those positions and then becoming more efficient. Otherwise, it may not be a full two positions that you probably would have seen cut, it probably would have been less than that. I think the other piece that is different here is there's really two controls the council has. One is what we call the position control, which is a position authorization that you have in the budget. And the second thing is the actual cash that gets appropriated to the budget. So these were not eliminated from the position control. So if there's a, ends up that we end up getting a lot more, you know, work come in next year, we'd have the ability to start that recruitment, but we'd still have to go to the council and make a mid-year adjustment for whatever the anticipated expenditure and revenues would be.
So. These items, expenditure reductions for 2015, are they included in the general fund expenditures chart here?
Yes.
So with development services, the savings for not filling those positions is included in the amount that has that...
Correct.
The increase, the increase being already explained by the...
By the million dollars. So his million dollars is just the pass-through money, and when you look at it overall, he effectively reduced it, the two positions plus the 150, he said earlier, by finding efficiencies in his department. So he's really aligned his department based upon his critical needs.
And where does the arborist savings, which department does that come from?
Parks Facilities.
That's Parks, okay. And human resource goes to?
Humans.
Human Services, okay.
Human Resources.
Human Resources. Oh, I see, yeah, thank you.
Question, is the human resources director different than the human services manager?
Yeah.
We are now going to fill a manager position, but leave the director position vacant?
So the human, human resources is our HR department, and so we've been, we've been holding that vacant for a while. The human services is...
Totally different.
Yeah.
So what this really is saying is if you go and look at the overall change in the general fund budget, the majority of the increases, the 1.8 million, is the piece that if we had not, if we had, if we set that aside and we looked at the general fund revenues and expenditures, by doing the reductions, those reductions were able to fund the increases in salaries and discretionary costs. So had we not had those third-party transactions we had to deal with, our budget would have been balanced without any request for revenue increases. Does that make sense?
For one year.
For one year.
Yeah. But I think the thing is, what we're trying to do, and the mayor was very clear, when we put the budget together, is we want to build long-term financial sustainability for the city. And so those costs that were included in there, they're ongoing costs that are going to be built into the future. So there, we're going, they would have had to been, that revenue would have had to been built into the budget analysis.
Well, yeah, but, but the cause of that long-term is a lot of the things that are outside the city's control.
I couldn't repeat what you said if I tried.
I know, I tried really...
And you did a great job. I understood every...
Did you say it three times?
I think I understood every word individually.
Well, when I, when I was trying to do this, I had like three or four people go, okay, does this even make sense? Because it's so hard to tell the story.
It was really good. Could you repeat that, please?
I think, I could try and help. I think, and I'll probably, and you'll probably say the same thing. I think two things. One is we've got negotiated salary increases for next year, and then we're projecting salary increases for just exempt staff as part of that. And so without the cuts that we ended up providing for, that we talked about there, plus the 1% variance in the operating costs, that really reflects, you know, a big part of the changes in the overall budget. So the other piece was all those kind of one-time costs, so the fire department, you know, EFOR increases, some of those things are kind of outside of the control of the city. We had to pay for those expenses this upcoming year. We don't, if we had, if we had not proposed a BNO tax increase, we would not have been able to balance the budget for these new services going forward. So we were kind of like, we took the, we took the budget, we made reductions in expenses to cover the ongoing costs of the city, because you've got your standard kind of baseline cost plus your salaries and some CPI adjustments. And then we had this whole new kind of additional costs that have been built on that are now kind of built into the future expenses of the city, and we had to find some new revenue to be able to, essentially what you said, to pay for those ongoing costs that are now built into the kind of the base budget of the city. I don't know if that helped at all.
All these costs up here are now ongoing obligations. They're not one-time obligations.
So let me take a bet of this. So what you're saying is that if we had not had these issues, you wouldn't have had to go after new revenues because you cut your other line items to match the increases you were going to expect. But we have these, so we had to go find other revenues, and they're ongoing, and you found ongoing revenues.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have any, you had engineering or English degree? That was very well done.
New ongoing covered by new, ongoing expenditures covered by new, by ongoing revenue.
Yes.
That's, you said it in six words or less?
Well, it was maybe sixteen.
We've been practicing enough, we're getting, we're synthesizing.
Right. Any other questions on this slide, or should we go on? So, I mean, really, I think what we're trying to do is synthesize the major changes in the budget for you in this primary slide, so, next.
Which I appreciate, because that's one of the exercises we struggled through last year, so I appreciate you focusing on that.
Thank you.
Oh.
And we're at the end for today.
Actually, there was one slide that got lost on hold. We had, at, just for council, we got through the night, but at, and Josh saw me at 5:25, saved my file and it said it was corrupt. So...
Kudos to Josh.
So we saw him, we said, and we were in a little bit of a panic at 5:25 today, because we thought our file got corrupted, so we weren't sure we have a presentation for tonight. So a couple of things got lost when we were trying to recover our file. So this takes us all the way through the general fund. Like I said, when we started the expenditures, really going, go all the way back to the departments. When we go back to this slide, again, there really, you know, the majority of the departments, except for the things that we had a conversation about, there really is no change, nothing really unusual to talk about. The departments are just sort of, you know, they know that they have to manage within that limited resources, and so they're just continuing to try and find efficiencies as best as they can. So there really isn't much else of a story to tell on the general fund. It's kind of an unusual year.
Nina?
Yeah.
So again, I'm the new kid in the last...
That's the obvious question. Is this the part of the budget that's balanced? And how would I know that?
It's balanced, because if you look at this slide, it says our total general fund revenues without cash expenditures is $38,772,290. I can go back to the... And I'm hoping they're the same.
Okay.
And if you look at that one, they don't match. Something happened along the way.
Can I, can I...
Oh, the $25,000.
She got me, $25,000.
Yes. It always happens. $25,000, what we did was, we used $25,000 of 2014 money to refund the Historical Society's feasibility study. It's one-time money that was included as an appropriation in 2014. So I took $25,000 out of cash to fund that project.
Except, so I was, I'm looking at page 2-5 of the budget, and I look at, at the top, you've got general fund, ending fund balance and beginning fund balance, and the difference is not $25,000, it's only about $12,000. So, which is fine. I mean, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Remember, we didn't have to use the full amount to cover, because we were able to build some of that in.
Yes, because we had savings. When we, when you take revenues and expenditures, there is an $11,000 to the good for 2015. So instead of using the entire $25,000, I only had to use $13,000.
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, so if there are some takeaways from today, you know, I think what we were trying to say is, one, the budget's balanced. Two, I think the economy has changed that we've seen in terms of where our old growth model was and the taxes that we were relying upon. It's, we think it's going to be different going forward. Two, we've tried to, in order to balance the budget, we've made some significant adjustments and reductions in our expenses, as well as some adjustments in revenue, and it's primarily driven by new costs that have kind of come in from, you know, those sources that are kind of outside of our control, but they need to be built into the future budget base. Any other? That's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Yes. Any other questions?
I don't have a, oh, Josh.
Well, I guess I just have a process question, because I will have questions about the general fund, and more particularly, department-level type questions or specific program-type questions. So process-wise, I remember from last year, we had a deadline for submitting those questions, and then we would get certain responses back by another deadline, and that enabled us as we moved forward, because our next meeting is scheduled for the 16th, and I don't remember at this time of day what we're doing on the 16th, but are we...
14th.
14th. You're right, 14th. So that's even sooner. So what, what would be the timeline if we have questions coming out of tonight? Would you suggest Paul or Stacy that we wait to ask those until after that next meeting? Or should we try to get them in before Friday, which is coming up?
If I had to answer questions, I would like them as soon as you could formulate them. And I don't know that there's a deadline for no more questions. We're going to be in dialogue for a couple weeks.
And we would say the sooner we get those questions in, the faster we can answer them. And if by your leave, we could use a similar process that you just identified for COSCO, would be to share those questions out, and we'll share the answers back. But the only, the only concern we have kind of going forward is, all the turnarounds on all of these meetings are pretty tight. So, you know, in the past, we've kind of had three or four days sometimes between, some of these are like two-day turnaround. So the more time we have to answer those, the better it is for us.
And perhaps a procedural way, let's, you know, one single list and status, and, you know, we got to these three, but not to these other three, and at least we can see you're working on it. I mean, I would feel, that's, would be, just, I think just knowing that you're still working on them is good. So, thank you for a very thorough, and I think very well-laid-out, well-communicated As much as you might hope, I don't think you've eliminated the chance that we're not going to have a lot of fun. But it's a pretty good first, first delivery. Thank you. Tola?
Yeah, so it's been, it's been a really, really good conversation today, and a lot of the concerns that I had with last year's budget are, obviously, the process has informed what you guys brought here today. I don't feel any disconnect from like how, at least, as one of seven wanted to see this process go. I do want to ask, going forward, is there going to be a point where we're going to talk about? I'm looking at, back at page 2-5, the summary of expenditures and revenues by fund. At some point, not tonight, we go from, you sum up all the funds. At the beginning of the year, we're at $61 million, and at the end of the year, we're at $50 million. You did say this was a year that there was a lot of, a lot of capital expenditures that are going to occur, and I understand that's what capital funds are for, but it sort of seems like in one of these four meetings, we should probably go through this list a little bit and, and talk about, some of these are clearly the kinds of capital expenditures you were talking about, and some of these look like maybe they're not.
I have a slide for Heather for Tuesday night that shows the changes in, were we using, decreasing the fund balance?
Excellent. Thank you.
I just had an observation, because to make, when I was looking and trying to compare the expenditures and the revenues, and seeing that it's balanced, but there are significantly higher increases in the expenditures than there are in the revenues, and if you just look at the percentages, you know, just these little percent changes along the general fund revenue, but it, it works out, because the 2014 budget had higher revenues than expenditures. So there was, there was room for the expenditures to be increased more. And the reason that I looked at that, and I just, I just wanted to make a note of it, because I want to come back and learn more about it, on the expenditures, though we say there aren't many changes or anything to talk about, it seems like the, the legal expenditure increase of 43% in the human services, though they are explained, they are significant, they're not an insignificant increase. It's, opinion?
Yeah.
As a percent.
Pardon me? As a percent, yeah.
Yeah. We should, look, I thought the same thing, if we could, if we just saw the actual amount, because, you know, when your basis is much lower, I mean, 1% in police is still a big number, and 6% or whatever it is in fire is a really big number. And 43% in a smaller one is not a big number at all. Any council members have any more questions or comments? Were there any outstanding questions? I don't believe so. All right, you get a free...
Hello. Paul, I had that you asked for an electronic copy of the revenue history.
You know, I checked my inbox, and there it was.
All right, very good.
So thank you for that. You can check it off.
Excellent. I like that. Nina, I had that you asked for the breakdown on sales tax sources, retail, construction, et cetera. So we'll provide that. I think Diane said she has that. Jen said that she would provide the BNO outreach schedule to you, so we will do that. And Joshua had asked if we were considering extending reciprocity to any other cities. I didn't sense that there was any need for follow-up on that, that you, you got the answer to that question? Is that correct?
Did I get the answer?
Did you get the answer?
I, I saw Ann nod her head and said that was an interesting thought, and Parks and Rec might think about it. I don't, I guess that was an answer.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, she said, yes, they could do that.
All right. And then, Tola, you just asked a question that I think Diane answered by saying that she was going to provide that, other funds, history and balances in a future meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Really, thank you. Yeah, it's good. I guess we're done. This meeting is adjourned.